Time to open up our June 24th City Council session.
Make a motion.
Williams?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Briggs?
Yes.
At this time, Mr. Slagel?
Yes, Your Honor, we have a presentation this evening. And a TRIM grant presentation by Ann Coney, Community Forester, Missouri Department of Conservation. Chad, do you want to do any introduction or anything, or do you want to go straight to Ann?
Sure, I can introduce Ann. Ann's our Community Forester from the Central Region Office in the Missouri Department of Conservation. An excellent and longtime partner. She's assisted us many, many times, and a lot of it's behind the scenes, and they don't always get a lot of acknowledgement in the public for the work they do do with us, so hopefully tonight we'll shore that up a little bit.
Hello, I don't really have much to say besides I am so grateful that you all applied for one of our TRIM grants. TRIM stands for Tree Resource Improvement and Maintenance. It's an urban forestry grant for anything that you can think of, basically about trees and in town. So if a community would like to know just what trees they have in town, we can do an inventory and use a grant for that, or if you have hazardous trees you want to take down, it's hard to fund those, we can do that. Planting trees, we can do that. Sending staff or volunteers to trainings or conferences about trees, we can do that. So letting your citizens know about some health concern with trees, like Emerald Ashpour, we can do that. So it comes up every year, the grants are up to $10,000 or even $25,000, depending on what you want to apply for, and we're here to help. So glad that Chad applied this year, and just looking forward to working with you again on it, or any other urban forestry stuff. I'm your urban forester, so if you've got any questions or concerns or tree issues, you've got a great resource here with Chad, and I'm his backup plan, so thank you for that. I want to give this to you and get this off my hands.
How much is it?
How much is it?
It's $8,000.
What's it for?
Chad applied for grant to have new training here in town for his staff and for the public on, for his staff, storm recovery, how to safely use equipment like chainsaws, a lot of just general tree information, tree biology, and then to the public on Emerald Ashpour and what that looks like and what we should be looking for, things to do as a business owner if you hit Emerald Ashpour and whatnot, so it's a really great program.
Well, it's already paid off because we had a tree examiner bring us a sample already, so it's...
Excellent. Excellent.
Okay.
That's awesome.
We're not done. Okay, we're not done. I just do not want to lose this check. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
That's a great way to start off the meeting. Okay, so now may I have a motion to approve the minutes from June 10th regular session?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Williams?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Okay, moving forward. Mr. Slagel, can you tell us about the first ordinance, Bill Number 201944, and ordinance amending Section 1 of Ordinance Number 4395, calling for an election in the city of Mexico, Missouri, on the question of imposing a one and a half of 1% capital improvement sales tax, designating the time of the holding of said election, and authorizing and directing the city clerk to give notice of said election.
Yes, Your Honor. Council approved the passage of ordinance 4395 back in June of 2018, which called for the election of the half-cent capital improvement sales tax. And it was designated to be used to finance improvements for construction of repairs of streets, curbs, gutters, storm sewers, bridges, drains, ditches, culverts, and other capital improvements. And that question was posed to the voters on April 2nd, 2019, and it was approved, and we received 70% approval on that at the time. And since then, we did submit all that information to the Missouri Department of Revenue for the state code requirements in order to continue the collection of the capital improvement sales tax. And then we were contacted by the Department of Revenue indicating that we had a reference in our original ordinance, and of course, we talked again about what we were using it for, and the original, and the reference indicated what they felt was identifying it potentially as a city transportation, a sales tax trust fund. Well, that was not the indication that we intended to have. We wanted to be very clear that it was the continuation of the capital improvement sales tax. So therefore, they asked that we make sure that we purposely clarified our intent based on what we said it was going to be and what we held the election on. And so this ordinance amends our first ordinance to address their concern by removing any reference whatsoever from the trust fund, that it is clearly the capital improvement sales tax, which is what we said it was going to be and what we promoted it to be and everything else. So if we adjust Section 1 of the ordinance and take any reference out to that section, that it only goes to the capital improvement sales tax, it will just continue as we've had. And they are happy with the change, and they've looked at the change, so at this time, we would recommend council proceed with two readings by title only and passage of the attached ordinance, and we have had it posted required like the time.
This means our election still stands?
Everything is fine.
There's change in that, right?
It just takes the one reference out of there so that they, otherwise, they thought we were imposing both, and that's not what was our intent at all.
Make a motion to read Bill Number 2019-44 by title only.
Williams?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Bill Number 2019-44, an ordinance amending Section 1 of Ordinance 4395, calling for an election in the city of Mexico, Missouri, on the question of imposing a one-half of 1% capital improvement sales tax, designating the time of the holding of said elections, and authorizing and directing the city clerk to give notice of said elections. Move for a second reading of Bill Number 2019-44.
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Bill Number 2019-44, an ordinance amending Section 1 of Ordinance Number 4395, calling for an election in the city of Mexico, Missouri, on the question of imposing a one-half of 1% capital improvement sales tax, designating the time of the holding of said elections, and authorizing and directing the city clerk to give notice of said election. I move for passage of Bill Number 2019-44. Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution, Bill Number 201945, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter agreements with the Mexico School District to assist in providing additional police services to the school district. Mr. Slagel?
Yes, Your Honor, this is our annual renewal of agreements with the Mexico School District to assist and provide additional police services. This is done, obviously, through the Department of Public Safety in providing safety and protection to the students in the public school district. The cost for all these services, of course, is reimbursed to us by the Mexico School District. Staff recommends the city of Mexico and Mexico School District enter into the agreements, which provide one full-time and one part-time school resource officer, and recommend you proceed with reading by title only and passage of the attached resolution.
I move for reading of Bill Number 201945. Second. By title only.
Williams?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Bill Number 2019-45, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into agreements with the Mexico School District to assist in providing additional police services to the school district. I move for passage.
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Okay, Bill Number 2019-46, a resolution of the city of Mexico, Missouri, adopting all aspects pertaining to the city of Mexico and the Audrain County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and the effort to become a disaster-resistant community. Mr. Slagel?
Yes, Your Honor, we are required, as part of the federal emergency management and part of the state of management, to update our hazard mitigation plan, and to cover the details, we will turn to Kenzie Russell.
If you've kept up with the news at all and the discussions in Congress about funding for FEMA, hazard mitigation is one of the major topics. Every five years, we're required to review and update the hazard mitigation plan, which covers all of Audrain County, and so the effort included Mexico with that. We are also required to adopt that plan. That keeps us in good standing if a disaster does occur, as far as being able to be reimbursed from disaster funds. In general, a couple of the things that I think you would recognize that are part of hazard mitigation and arise from the plan are outdoor tornado sirens, for example, here in Mexico, and in fact, out in the county. I believe most of the communities in the county now have an outdoor siren of some vintage, and that is considered a mitigation activity in that it helps warn people, reduce loss of life in the event of tornado or high winds. Our flood insurance program that we participate in through FEMA would be another one of those mitigation activities. And so this plan basically updates our activities in regard to those natural disasters and, to a lesser extent, man-made disasters. So for here, it is wind and ice and flooding and drought and those kinds of things. We'd recommend, since we participated in putting the plan together, that the council go ahead and adopt the resolution that adopts the plan. We'll pass that on to the Regional Planning Commission. It will all be submitted to SEMA and be on file. We'll be prepared in that respect then, should something occur. I'll try to answer any questions. Marcy can answer any, I can't.
Any questions?
I move for reading of Bill Number 2019-46 by title only. Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Bill Number 2019-46, a resolution of the city of Mexico, Missouri, adopting all aspects pertaining to the city of Mexico, Missouri, in the Audrain County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and the effort to become a disaster-resistant community. I move for passage of Bill Number 2019-46.
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Okay. Bill Number 2019-47, a resolution accepting the conveyance of right-of-way and temporary construction easement for the Holt Street Reconstruction Project, Mo.TIDP 440310 Project. Mr. Slagel?
Yes, Your Honor, as you know, we are in the process of reconstructing Holt Street, and we received a federal grant to help us with that. The design of the sidewalks and so on, as a part of that, requires additional right-of-way and construction easements to make that happen. We have been acquiring temporary easements from the adjacent property owners. We have had one more of the property owners, Sandra Johnson, issue us the temporary easement to make this project happen. I think we have one easement outstanding at this time now?
This makes 22 out of 23.
So that's good news. So at this time, we'd recommend council proceed with reading by title only and passage of the attached resolution, accepting the conveyance of the right-of-way and temporary easement from Sandra Johnson.
Okay, I move for reading of Bill Number 2019-47 by title only.
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Bill Number 2019-47, a resolution accepting the conveyance of a right-of-way and temporary construction easement for the Holt Street Reconstruction Project, Mo.TIDP 440310 Project. I move for passage of Bill Number 2019-47.
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Okay. Bill Number 2019-48, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign Task Order Number 7 with Horner and Shifrin Incorporated for Engineering Services. Mr. Slagel?
Yes, Your Honor, we have to do an evaluation of the permit limits as it relates to our industrial pre-treatment program, and to cover this resolution, Task Order, we will turn to Kenzie Russell.
Horner and Shifrin has a general services engineering contract with us. They've been doing engineering for us on our wastewater plant and system for a number of years. This task order falls under that general services contract. The need for the task orders triggered by federal regulations. We have to reapply for our wastewater discharge permit. Used to be every five years. DNR has kind of played, got some games with the timing over the last couple of years. Our current permit is for three years, but the reissuance of the permit triggers the regulation for us to have a review of the permit limits for our industries under our pre-treatment program. And this is a two-step review, a two-stage review. The first is a limited review, and that cost under this task order is $9,100. If that limited review is found acceptable by DNR, that's the end of what we have to do until some other construction activity, a new industry in town, reissuance of our permit, something triggers this provision again. If they determine that the limited review needs to be expanded into a more detailed look, a more detailed technical review, that's the second step of this, the additional $18,000 step. So we've basically split the scope of this into two pieces. We'll do the first part, submit it, and hopefully not have to do the second part, but if we do, then this task order would cover that technical, detailed technical review.
Any questions?
Move for a reading of Bill Number 2019-48 by title only. Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Bill Number 2019-48, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign Task Order Number 7 with Horner and Shifrin Incorporated for Engineering Services. I move for passage of Bill Number 2019-48.
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Okay, we're moving over to other business. Tell us about a staff report, accepting a quote from Duke's Root Control Incorporated to treat segments of the city sewer collection system.
Yes, Your Honor, as you may be aware, that council, that we had to clean and remove debris from our trunk line running through Northeast Park, and as a part of that, we did find some root intrusions into that line, and so the next step of that is to treat those so that we hopefully don't have those grow back. And so to cover this staff report as far as the costs and what we're doing here, we'll turn to Kenzie Russell.
Bruce pretty well described it. We have been trying to clean and TV our trunk line, beginning from the Green Boulevard area, all the way up through the MMA property, across Pollock Road, and then through Northeast Park. We've gotten a good chunk of that looked at. We did slip-line part of it this year, up close to the Salt River, where we had found issues. This, when we did discover that there was some partial blockage, we got it cleared, and then in TV-ing the line, discovered the root intrusion. We've used Duke's Root Control previously throughout the city. There, they have a foaming system that coats the entire circumference of the pipe interior and dries up the tree roots. We would like to treat that here this summer, and then come back with the next budget year, and we'll slip-line that portion as well to seal off those areas where the roots are growing. But this will help remove any of the roots that we didn't get sawed out. It'll kill them back, or dry them up and remove them back about six to eight inches through the pipe joint and into the ground, so it's effective. It has a three-year guarantee on it, and maybe most importantly, it does not use copper, which is, at least some of the councils are aware, has been an issue for us in the past with our wastewater effluent. And so we would like to have this approved for $12,900 to treat 2,000 feet of the larger diameter trunk line that runs through the city park.
Okay, my only question is, I know we only have one, I know I heard you say that we've used them before, but have we sought to see if there's anyone else around that uses something similar to get another quote?
This is a proprietary chemical that they use. We have looked at what other chemicals are available and in use. Frankly, the other ones are more hazardous, both in terms of the application, and certainly in this case, because it's so close to the treatment plant, we'd like to have something that we're guaranteed not to kill the bacteria and all in the plant with. We've used them in other parts of town, and again, because of the hazard risk, prefer to use this in residential areas and all, just to reduce hazard.
Okay, that was just, you know, I just saw the one, and I didn't know if there were other, you know, I mean, companies...
There are other products and other things out there. We've, just in our evaluation, feel like this is the, it's effective and it's the least hazardous.
Okay.
This might be a silly question, but you're cutting the roots and all, does that affect any of the stability of the trees?
No.
Oh, okay.
It's smaller roots, it's not any of the main foundation or anchor roots that, those typically do not get into our line, thank goodness.
Hey, I saw that big chunk you pulled out and put up there that one time.
Yeah.
That wasn't a root, that was a...
Typically.
That was a rock.
Yeah, that was a shillelagh.
It was a pleasure, counsel.
I move that we accept the quote from Duke's Root Control Incorporated to treat segments of the city's sewer line. Second.
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Briggs? Yes.
All right, it's time to pay the bills.
Make a motion to pay the bills?
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Okay, now it's time for comments. Start with Chris tonight. Mr. Williams, do you have any comments?
I do, I do. First of all, I'd like to apologize about the last council meeting. I probably shouldn't even came. My cat died that morning for 20 years, and so I was kind of like not my usual cool, calm self, and I said some things and made accusations, and I was, I just wasn't thinking, and so I apologize for coming off like that. It's not how I usually am, so I apologize, but it also makes me, it hurts my heart to see that we killed 322 animals so far this year, and so, I mean, that's almost two a day. I'm using your numbers of how many animals you have. I mean, if I'm wrong, it says you have impounded 796, but you've only adopted or returned to owner 474, which leaves 322.
Well, what would probably, that's kind of say that's a number too. You still have animals left at the shelter, and also, some of those numbers is, they actually, this time of year, you get litters of kittens, they have dropped them all without a mom. Some of these animals are died and are fazed, it's not, that doesn't give you a total, how many we killed all. That's just, you know, they have come in, this time of year, it's just litters that they just pray in, it's not a mom, there's no way to nurse them. Some of them die in the shelter at night or different things, but no, that's not an information, number of anything like that.
Okay, well, I'm just, that's what I did, I was just like, how many went out, how many are adopted, minus how many came in?
Oh, you go there now, it's a shelter full, and we also doing a, the month of June, we're doing a adopted cat and second adoption, it's at no cost because of the magnitude of cats and animals, and they're coming in from everywhere. They're leaving the bush there, they're leaving the fence, and some of them just don't manage it. And everything that we put down, we do have a vet clinic, is our veterinarian, the bay, nothing is put down without an examination, or then some of them have to go down if they're by case or the bay, or something.
That's good, because I was like, that really was like, I'm like, wow, wow, that's like, that's...
You want them down, you go down to more.
Right, I'm like, whoa.
Sounds like you need a new cat or two.
It's too early for that, too early, too early, too early.
Five will get one free.
No, 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 no. But keeping on that track, when are the officers out, the animal control officers out? And I ask because we had a pit bull get loose in our street one night, and it was probably eight o'clock, but I just don't know.
So when the animals shelter off, they are actually on duty until five, and once we're, they off duty, it goes through joint communication and an officer is called, if it's a big, you know, officer, animal running at large, you need to call, you know, we don't have officers at night, public safety picks up the call after five.
After five, after five. And then, back to what I was talking about last time, and I guess my issue, why I get so riled up about it was, it's not so much the grass or anything, it's just, I get frustrated up here because we have so many places that we constantly seem to deal with, and we don't get resolution for, and I'm just like, how do you deal with that? You know, you're on this person for this week, but then I've got places in town that we've been dealing with for years, and that's just, it just got the better of me, it got me frustrated because I'm just like, what can we do to fix these problems? Because for them, they say that, you know, and their argument to me is, well, what about this? And I'm like, I don't know. So, and I thought we were going to clear a lot of that up with the new codes, but I don't feel like we have. Feel like we're still fighting the same people that we were fighting before. And so that was, that was my frustration. And then, from a legal perspective, I like to ask a question, is if you come after me for my house being dilapidated, but then I can point before other houses that you haven't gone after who are dilapidated, how does that work in a court of law on your case? I'm just curious, I'm not pointing, I'm just saying.
No, no, that's fine. We don't do selective prosecution. That's not, we do not. If we become aware of a situation, we will normally send Matt out, Matt looks at it, photographs it, makes an excellent report. We will deal with that. If it comes to our office, David has exhausted all of their avenues, and it comes out to find resolution. Matter of fact, executive session this evening, we're going to discuss one of those with what we can get.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Again, I apologize, and I'm trying to climb out, I know you guys are just trying to do your job, and so, that's all I got, thank you very much.
Well, I heard some nice comments about the parade, the one, and they thought it was nice that the heroes were recognized, they liked that. Everybody was... Everybody was disappointed because the Bedwiser horses didn't make it, but they still enjoyed the parade, and I enjoyed being on the little, one of Chris's little motor, golf carts going around and...
And you're a good driver, good driver.
It was fun, so.
Mr. Slagel?
Yes, a couple of things. Chris, we feel your same frustration. And you and I talked a little bit about one thing that we might want to take a look at, and that is the issue about, you know, we talked about setbacks, you know, and the larger properties, I don't like mowing, and that applies across the board, whether it's residential, commercial, industrial. And as we said, maybe that shouldn't apply to the residential. So, if we'd like to discuss that further as a council, I think that'd be a good idea because of, you know, you only, on those larger parcels, they only have to mow the first 50 feet. Well, if it's in a residential neighborhood, is that sometimes a question? Is that fair with those larger properties that may not do that? And so, we could, we could look at that. Maybe that would help address, I think, a couple of the issues that you're specifically looking at. So, I think that's something we can look at further.
Right. I forgot to mention that, but that was, yeah, we talked about that, and you know, I'm just like, if I have this big, long property and it touches 10, 10 individual households, but the big property doesn't have to follow the same rules as the 10 individual households, how is that really fair when they're all zoned the exact same? Just because I own more, I don't have to follow the same rules, it seems a little...
So, we can take a look at that and maybe take, break something back to you on that.
Thanks.
The other thing is, last week, we had a Highway 54 meeting, which, you know, Highway 54 is what we're talking about, is the shared four lane from Mexico, all the way basically through Pittsfield, Illinois, and in essence, connecting the four lane from here clear to I-72. And we did get a chance to drive by, you know, the new Champ Clark Bridge, and that's coming along very well. They have been set back a little bit on the Illinois side because of flooding, but they were actually starting to make connections on the Iowa side. So, it's coming along very well. Now, one of the sidebars to that, though, was when we were in Pittsfield, we were made aware of, and the mayor was with us, and Russell and I, and we were with a couple of the commissioners, and we were made aware of a marijuana facility, growing facility, production facility, that was not very far from there. And so, we did take a sidebar and went to look at the facility to see what it looked like, smell, all those kinds of things. And I think pleasantly surprised, I mean, I think from where it was located at, which was kind of on a gravel road, kind of on a dead-end situation, if you didn't know it was there, you wouldn't even have paid attention to it. Yeah, it's a large facility that, you know, is fenced in, so, but if that type of facility would, you know, and we're going to start seeing that, you know, now in this state, and if that's really how they're addressed, it certainly took away some of my concerns is when I, when I seen that facility, and at least that particular one, and how it was operated and where it was located. And like I said, I'm assuming everybody that drives by it, 90% of the people go by it, don't even pay attention to it, don't even see that it's there, and you wouldn't even hardly even know it's there. So, at least that was my perception of when I seen it.
You'd have to go off the well-beaten path to get to it.
Yeah.
So, you bought up the 54, is, what's the progress, I mean, what's the outlook for that? And I ask because I've been doing, I mean, I've been doing a lot of travel this year, and it's really, I can tell a big boom for places that have those, the four lane versus the two lane. So, I think it'd be great economically, but I mean, I really haven't heard if we're any closer than we were when I got in the council years ago, or...
And Russell can help me with this as well, but one thing about is, we continue to advocate for, we've been able to do a few things. And we recognize that it's going to take time, namely because the state is sitting there saying, we don't have money to put in new structures. So, but every time we get an opportunity to take a bite at something and do something more with it, we try. And one of the big obstacles in that whole thing, which was, you know, a major cost, was that Champ Clark Bridge. So, advocating to get it done was a huge thing, as far as that goes, because that is certainly one of the major bottlenecks of the route. A couple of the other ones that are going along now, Basinger and Scott's Corner, both of those, and, you know, the one right out here by R6 Community Schools, that one is coming along right now as far as the high-speed roundabout and so on. And so, we're just trying to, knowing that we're not going to get it all at once, we're trying to take bites at it. And the other thing that we are doing is, last year, we applied, and this year, we're also applying for a grant, I forget the name of the grant. It's a federal grant, is it, what was it?
The Build?
Build Grant. And so, it was trying to recognize to do another section of the road to get it to that level. And so, because they don't do earmarks anymore, obviously, at the federal level, but they do have grants, and so, we're going after one of those in regional planning, and Audrain County and Pike County is all going together to apply for that. The other thing that happens is making sure that we continue to recognize that route as a priority for the region. And that will happen again this week through the Regional Planning Act Committee, which is transportation, which they set up their five-year plan for the state. And we always want to make sure that that's listed on there as a high priority for this region. And one of the people to vote on that happens to be sitting in the room, which is Kenzie. So, we, so this is a good time for that discussion, to make sure we let him continue to know that is a priority for us.
We're not telling you to have to vote or something.
Alan Linders is the other representative from Audrain County, and Alan and I have discussed projects and are together in our thinking and support, so we'll be certainly pushing the regional project, and I believe Pike County Commissioners also are very supportive. That's part of the same act, so we should have two counties really supporting it.
Well, I do agree that, Ms. Vicki, about the parade, heard a lot of good things about it, and even though some of them, you know, we were all disappointed we didn't get the entire wagon, at least seeing one of them in the parade was good, and somebody coming to help, huge that horse actually is when you're standing beside them, and it was fun and just that many people came out on a Wednesday afternoon. Ms. Missouri, that was also nice. You noticed, some of you received your, I guess, their coasters that we had.
Coasters.
Commemorative coasters, and it was nice to be able to have the opportunity to represent the city at, Ms. Missouri. This Saturday will be a busy day for me. I have much with the mayor, 9:00 at Brick City. Last time we had 35. I've been getting contacts from people who stopped me in the road, saying they're planning on being there, so hopefully we'll be able to share some things. I know Ms. Jackson is planning on being there. Mister, I know I'll be asking probably different members of the different departments to possibly come to, you know, based on some of the input that we're getting from them, because like we said, sometimes getting people to come out at city council meeting is a little more difficult. When it's a little more and less formal, they're likely to come out and maybe share some. So, I appreciate that. And then, we're doing the things at Simmons Stables this weekend, so I'm looking forward to that. Enjoyed riding with Mr. Slagel and Russell the other day. Didn't know that I was going to get to go see a marijuana growing facility, but, and then to step outside to see if we can smell anything. Glad we didn't, because I did not want to go home with anybody who might have had a I guess one of us should have stayed in the car. But I think, you know, I'm enjoying being the mayor, so. Now, at this time, do we have anyone from the public that would like to make any comments? Seeing none? Do I have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
I make a motion to adjourn into executive...
Oh.
Okay.
Now, she's just confirming.
I make a motion to adjourn into executive session for litigation.
My second.
Okay.
Williams?
Yes.
Shivers?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.